Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Krassie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Amadis?
Here.
Mrs. Buckley?
Here.
Mr. Christensen?
Mrs. Paul?
Here.
Mrs. Dobus?
Here.
Mr. Means?
Mr. Nagel?
Here.
Mrs. Druhl?
Here.
Mr. Workmeister?
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items.
Those move second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 22nd, 2018.
Those move second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven to zero. I need to announce executive session held June 19th, 2018, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information, and June 26th, 2018, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report, Ms. Wells.
As we wrap up the 2017-2018 school year, it is my pleasure to share these final items of good news with you. Congratulations to the 425 members of the Bethel Park High School class of 2018 who graduated on June 2nd. This year, 2017 stu-- I'm sorry, 217 students graduated with honors, high honors, or highest honors, which meant that their QPA's were at least 3.5. This year, 81% of our graduates will attend a four-year college or university, 11% will attend a two-year college, 5% will attend a trade or technical school, 1% will enter the military, and 1% will enter the workforce. The class of 2018 earned over $2.1 million in scholarships and their average SAT score of 1122 was 49 points higher than the state's and 52 points higher than the national average. This year's valedictorian was Kayla Armstrong and the salutatorian was Brianna Shannon. Congratulations to all of our graduates and best wishes as they begin this next chapter of their lives. One of the most anticipated evenings of the school year is the annual awards and recognition night, which is held at the high school every May. At this year's event, representatives from several local organizations, educational institutions, and the military were on hand to present scholarships and awards for our seniors, as well as some recognitions to three of our outstanding juniors. In addition to the scholarships presented that evening, certificates were presented to all of the students who received scholarships and honor cords were presented to the students who were graduating with honors. Congratulations to the 15 Bethel Park High School students who were inducted into the high school's chapter of Quill and Scroll, the International Honor Society for High School Journalists. Gavin Campbell, Danica Moody, Amber Schnup, Maria Sero, Nicholas Gaimond, Corey Hayduk, Angelina Lorenz, Alex Mullen, Michaela Nar, Victoria Slazinski, Juliana Carbone, Catherine Crooks, Lauren Mullen, Grace Reagan, and Brady Stallings. These students were recognized for their work on the Hawkeye newspaper, Vernissage Student Literary Magazine, Beacon Yearbook, and Blackhawk TV. Also receiving special recognition for his efforts was freshman Logan Wright, who was not old enough for induction this year. Thirty-four Bethel Park High School students earned recognitions on the national Spanish exams, including 10 students who scored high enough to earn medals. All of their names are on the screen before you, but we wanted to especially recognize gold medalist Gavin Heinrichs-Majaic, silver medalist Thomas Liezek, Emma Petrick, Lindsay Fob, Julia Cable, Shadeia Feliciano, and Kate Sims, Kate Samms, and bronze medalist Elise Bermudez, Abby Kearns, and Jillian Noel. Congratulations to all of these students. Our high school French students did equally as well on the French national exams, earning 32 awards, including 13 medals. Special recognition goes to gold medalist Marissa Wazinski and Tobias Ruhl, silver medalist Ryan Cook, Kayla Armstrong, Haley Radcliffe, Cameron Silman, Joseph Bilski, Antoine Janovic, William Bosma, and Caleb Shook, and bronze medalist Jackson Stewart, Abigail Phillips, and Evan Zelt. Congratulations to all of these students as well. The Bethel Park High School German club gave out its final three awards of the school year, and sophomore Lily Wilson received all three. First, she was presented with the Dietrich Award of Academic Excellence for having the highest cumulative academic achievements of any BPHS German student during the year. She also received a certificate naming her the year's most outstanding member of the BPHS chapter of the Delta Epsilon Phi German National Honor Society. Finally, she received a one-week scholarship to study German this summer at the Millersville University German Language Camp. Congratulations, Lily. Twenty-seven Bethel Park High School students were inducted into the National Latin Honor Society in recognition of their outstanding academic achievement and citizenship in Latin class during the 2017-2018 school year. Among this year's inductees were seniors Alex DiPramperio, Alyssa George, Alexandra Kepler, Elizabeth Hartnett, Corey Patterson, Sage Pinky, Brianna Shannon, and Joe Wright, who received honor cords. And other Latin news, congratulations to Angeline Lorenz, who earned a magna cum laude certificate on the National Latin III exam, and to Tanush Ball for earning a cum laude certificate on the National Latin II exam. Three Bethel Park High School students who attended the Steel Center for Career and Technical Education were inducted into the National Technical Honor Society. Congratulations to Kara Markle, Anthony Stefan, and Peyton Jaeger. To be eligible for induction, students must maintain a minimum 3.5 overall GPA and have no discipline issues and be nominated by their instructors. Bethel Park High School Forensics Team members Madison Newman and Caleb Shook competed at the National Catholic Forensic League's Grand Tournament in Washington DC, and both students were among the top 25% of competitors, making it past the preliminary rounds into the final rounds. Congratulations to both of these students on a great season. For the second consecutive year, the Bethel Park High School Chess Club won the Western Pennsylvania Interscholastic Chess League Section Championship. This year's team compiled a perfect eight-to-zero record. Congratulations to the team members Tanush Ball, Matthew Casalita, Kobe Coleman, Adam Coliver, Sebastian DiPramperio, Alex DiPramperio, and Nick Minshaw on a great season. Bethel Park freshmen who participate in the music program brought home three awards from the annual ninth-grade music trip to the Music Showcase Festival in Hershey, including superior ratings for the ninth-grade band and girls choir and an excellent rating for the ninth-grade orchestra. Keep up the good work. Our spring sports teams and athletics concluded successful seasons. The boys volleyball team won the section championship, advanced to the Whipple finals for the third time in the past six years, and qualified for the state playoffs. The baseball team won the section championship for the second time in the past three years and advanced to the WPIAL quarterfinals. Also advancing to the Whipple quarterfinals was the boys lacrosse team. Additionally, the softball and girls lacrosse teams qualified for the Whipple playoffs. Four track athletes earned five medals at the Whipple championships with Rebecca Leibel and Sarah Gilliam qualifying to compete at the state track championships. Tennis players Max McKittrick and James Forenzy finished in third place at the section doubles tournament and qualified to complete in the Whipple-- compete in the Whipple doubles tournament. Congratulations to all of our athletes on a great season. Independence Middle School eighth graders ended the school year on a high note with the annual eighth-grade awards program during the school day, where several organizations and their teachers recognized students for outstanding achievements in the classroom, athletic fields, and stage, as well as for their leadership. It's gratifying to see how excited the students were when the presenters were describing the award winners and the students were excitedly speculating with each other to figure out who the awards were going to. And once the names were announced, they broke out into appreciative applause for their classmates. Later that same day, seventh and eighth-grade students were honored at the Academic Excellence Awards Program. This year, 115 seventh graders and 148th graders earned distinguished honors for maintaining a minimum 3.75 QPA for the first three nine weeks of the 2017-2018 school year. Additionally, eighth-grade Presidential Academic Excellence Awards were presented to 104 eighth graders who maintained a minimum 3.5 QPA from seventh grade through the first-- through the first three nine weeks of the 2017-2018 school year and scored advanced on either the PSSA reading or math test. Congratulations to all of these students. We look forward to hearing more great things about them as they advance to the high school level. Bethel Park students were still learning on the last day of school. Lincoln students experienced a fun day of learning on STEAM day, where they were able to rotate through the classrooms to participate in some fun hands-on STEAM activities, such as working in pairs to build towers out of pipe cleaners, but each partner using only one hand, designing paper airplanes that would fly the furthest, making houses of the future out of blocks, and creating artwork out of numbers, to name a few. What came first, the chicken or the egg? Franklin fourth-grade students in all three sections pondered this question and so many more as they participated in the embryology project that had them learning about eggs, including how to determine if eggs had been fertilized, checking to see if fertilized eggs would produce chicks, and hatching chicks that went to a family farm. Memorial and Washington art students spent some time this spring raising awareness for the importance of living a sustainable lifestyle by participating in the National Parachutes for the Planet campaign. Parachutes for the Planet is an offshoot of the Mother Earth Project and is designed to raise awareness about climate change and the importance of living sustainable lifestyles. Students used watercolors to create beautiful parachutes with eco-conscious slogans such as "Save the Earth, It's Our Turf!" and "Save the Bees, Please." Their designs were uploaded onto the Parachutes for the Planet's Instagram site. They did a great job. And that concludes our report for this evening and for the 2017-2018 school year. It was our pleasure to be able to share all of this good news with you. Thank you for your kind attention to these sometimes lengthy presentations.
It was a good school year. And I think student government and PTA/PTO council are probably on summer vacation. Solicitors report? Do we have any committee reports?
The AIU elected their new board last night, and the new president is from the Highland School District, Debbie Beer, and the vice president is from Baldwin Whitehall, David Scott. So we're excited to start a new year there. And Dr. Hipper, that was her last meeting. So we wish her well. She'll be instructing new people who will be going into the superintendent's role at Point Park. So all the new superintendents coming out will be having her guidance and teaching. So we wish her well. The other thing is I attended Steel Center this afternoon. We've been working on revamping their curriculum, looking at their adult workforce curriculum and seeing what we can put in place. So I was there all afternoon. And also, we've been dealing with Western Area Career and Technology Center, and you'll see there's an agreement on here. They have agreed to take any of our students who would like to get into the machinist course. There are several companies in the Bethel Park Industrial Park that will be looking for machinists, particularly-- we need probably close to 100 jobs will be coming available, at least 45 immediately. So it's-- we're at a crisis stage. And in interviewing those companies and going back, it's amazing what they do. I mean, machining, I had no idea how wonderful it-- I mean, how exciting it was. And it was also exciting to find out that three of the company's CEOs are former Bethel Park graduates. And they talk about how, you know, they work their way up and all the things. One is a defense contractor, and he spent like a couple days in a tank, had to look at some of the interior to see what they could make. There's a lot of really interesting skills and field that just come together in machining. It was interesting. We have an artist that works back there, and he does different types of artwork on the machine. And he includes them then in the products that they sell. So it's really interesting. So anyway, watch them on BPTV. We'll be featuring them in about maybe three or four weeks. We'll be highlighting those companies. But if you know anybody that's interested in machining, we have an agreement with them. They're going to take our students at their member price. So that's a good thing. But anybody in the area, if you can let us know, and also adults. They're, you know, desperate for adults, too. So just contact me and I'll make sure that the right people get the information. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any public comments on agenda items this evening?
Donna, can I talk about what the rec board?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. Just three items that I wanted to highlight.
Sure.
The rec board and the municipality, they're revamping several of our parks. So there's a new playground going in at Simmons. It's going to be very colorful and amazing. It's-- the area's closed off right now as they're doing the renovations for it, but it's going to be-- I've seen pictures. It's an amazing playground that's going to be there with a zip line that is, you know, not real high. It sort of just goes across. And then the other one is at Bethel Green, they're putting in turf field there for soccer that they said that the schools can use also. So to have that kind of facility when the weather is bad is good for all of the different sports teams. And the rec department is also collaborating with the DECA club and Mrs. Smoller, and the-- about three DECA students are going to help the rec board, the recreation department, publicize everything better through Facebook and Twitter, and they're designing a whole-- the DECA students are designing a whole program for them to use and follow to help promote all the things that are going on. We, you know, like the farmer's market and everything else. So that was pretty exciting. And the last thing that I wanted to mention was, for years, we haven't had fireworks, so we are now going to have fireworks at Millennium Park on June 30th. And they're shuttling from the high school to go up there because there's not a lot of parking. So there'll be activities during the day, and then at night, the fireworks. And you can park at Lincoln or at Hamilton if you're just going to watch the fireworks. But if you park at Millennium, it's going to be a cost. But if you park at the high school and shuttle, there's no cost. So there's-- the rec board does a lot of things, but those are three things I wanted to highlight.
Yeah, great. So are you enjoying being on that board?
I am.
All right. At least they meet, unlike the tree-- shade tree.
The shade tree committee that I volunteered for hasn't met yet, so I don't know what's happening with that.
Thanks for that report.
Sure.
Sorry, I didn't realize that you had a meeting to report on. That's good. So did I get everybody now? Committee reports were good. Okay. Now, public comments on agenda items for this evening.
Under Personnel, item number 6A. If we have some background, just list the conditions of employment. But just some background on that person.
We will hold that out, and we will introduce that person who is here this evening.
You will do what?
We will hold that out and introduce that person who is here this evening.
Okay.
Six-- you're talking about 6A number one, correct?
Yes.
6A one. Okay, yep, got it. Any other comments on agenda items? Then we will move into business items. Curriculum Committee and Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are five-- excuse me, five items this evening under curriculum. Would any like any held out? Hearing none, I move, number one, the Community College of Allegheny County Memorandum of Agreement for Dual Enrollment; two, Western Area Career and Technology Center Agreement; three, Waterfront Learning Services Agreement, Allegheny Intermediate Unit; four, Edgessir; and five, Reed 180 Universal 2017-2018 Budget. Second.
Items one through five under curriculum have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry seven to zero. Personnel Committee and Mrs. Ruhl.
We have 10 items under Personnel. Are there any to be held out?
Yes, 6A1.
6A1?
Mm-hmm.
Any others? If not, I move item one, approval of extra duty responsibility; item two, appointment of board treasurer; item three, approval of tuition reimbursement; item four, acceptance of resignation; five, change of assignment; and six, two, appointment of personnel; and seven, approval of summer help for custodial maintenance; and eight, individual memorandum of agreement with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers; nine, approval of staffing changes; and 10, approval of substitutes.
Mrs. Ruhl, I think you're also moving-- are you also moving 6B and C?
And what did I say?
I think you just said 6A.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, 6B and C. Yes.
I need a second.
The--
Second.
Items one through five, 6A, two, B and C, and seven through 10, under Personnel, have been moved by Mrs. Ruhl and seconded by Mr. Amadis. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry seven to zero. Mrs. Ruhl.
I move item 6A1. Administration, Joseph Vilani, a associate principal at the high school with the 2018-19 annual salary of $96.5 with the transfer of up to 25 sick days in benefits as outlined in the Act 93, Compensation and Benefits Plan. Effective date is to be determined, but no later than August 27th, 2018, pending proper clearances and pre-employment documentation and final review of the solicitor.
Second.
Item 6A1, under Personnel, has been moved by Mrs. Ruhl and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. All in-- any questions or comments on this one?
I just-- Mrs. Cook, I just had a quick comment. Very excited to be recommending the candidate to the board. Joe Vilani has extensive experience, some that I'd like to share, and I know he's going to speak a little bit to the public and to the board, hopefully after you vote in this direction. But we're excited to have him because he brings an excellent teaching background. Some experience he had was a middle school gifted coordinator. He was also a high school and middle school career and technical transition coordinator. He also was a high school emotional support teacher, as well as moving into administration as the data and assessment assistant principal at Seneca Valley School District. And up until, hopefully, tonight, he was the assistant principal at Seneca Valley Senior High School. So extensive experience in both gifted, special education, regular education, administration, and data analysis. It was an extensive process, and we're very excited, all of us here, to have him be joining our school district and know that he will do great things. So it's with a strong recommendation that I recommend to the board, Joseph Vilani, for the position of associate principal.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Welcome to Bethel Park, Mr. Vilani. Would you like to come up and say a few words?
Whoops.
I'd just like to thank you, Dr. Pascal, for the recommendation, especially the board for the approval and appointing me to this position. Looking really forward to building relationships and getting to work here in the Bethel Park District with fellow administrators, faculty, staff, teachers, students, parents, and especially the community members. It's a privilege and honor looking at Bethel Park, its tradition, its offerings in academics and extracurriculars. It fitted in-- it fit in right with where I wanted to be and what I looked to bring. Very excited for the opportunity. I look forward to getting to work very hard, and I look to hopefully be a part of this district for a very long time. So thank you very much, and I look forward to getting work very soon.
Thank you. Thanks for getting that orange tie for us, too. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Workmeister.
Okay, Mrs. Cook, there are five items under Facilities and Services Committee. Would anyone like any held out? Hearing none, the first one, purchase of district utility vehicle, part of the 2017-18 budget. Number two, approval of the proposal for consulting geotechnical engineering services for expert opinion and testimony for the hillside and landslide at the high school. Number three, approval of paving contractor for the 2017-18 budget. Number four, approval of the proposal for the high school stadium sound system upgrade. And number five, repair of the combination oven at the high school. Would anyone--
I need a second.
Second.
Items one through five under Facilities and Services have been moved by Mr. Workmeister and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry seven to zero. Finance Committee and Mr. Amadis.
There are 10 items under the Finance Committee this evening. Would anybody want any of these held out for discussion? Hearing none, I move all 10 items. Number one being the June 2018 salaries and bills. Number two, the bill listed for July 2018 meeting. Number three, the May 2018 financial report. Number four, the budgetary transfers. Number five, approval of depositories. Number six, post-June 30th, 2018 budget transfer. Number seven, Google HIPAA waiver. Number eight, acceptance of donation. Number nine, approval of the purchase of information technology equipment for the 2017-2018 budget. And number 10, flying.
I need a second.
Sir.
Items one through 10, under Finance Committee, have been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mr. Nagel. Any questions or comments on any of these items? I just wanted to point out that we are accepting a donation of $400 from an anonymous donor who wanted to pay some of the outstanding lunch debts incurred by some of our students. So I just want to say thank you to that anonymous donor. That's really wonderful to do that for our students. All in favor of items one through 10, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry seven to zero. Policy Committee, Mrs. Ruhl, will you take policy for me this evening?
Yes. We have one item to be approved tonight, and one is in its second reading. The item to be approved is approval of policy revision, 918 Title I Parent and Family Engagement.
Second.
Item one, under Policy, has been moved by Mrs. Ruhl and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven to zero.
The second policy is second of three readings, and it is Policy 113.3, Screening and Evaluations for Students with Disabilities. That policy will be approved at the August 7th meeting.
Correct. Thank you, Mrs. Ruhl, for taking that. And under Other, Mrs. Buckley, would you take that for me this evening?
Certainly, Mrs. Cook. There are two items under Other. Would any like any held out? Hearing none, number one, student agreement, and number two, our monthly board meeting date change, which would involve moving the date from August 21st, 2018 to the regular voting meeting for August 28th, 2018, to coincide with the 4th Tuesday of the month. Second.
Items one and two under Other have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mrs. Ruhl. Any questions or comments on these items? I had just noticed when we got our calendars for the month, and we had pre-approved these dates way back when. Someone didn't get out a new calendar and count the 4th Tuesday of the month. We had last year five Tues-- yeah, five Tuesdays in the month, so that threw off the date. So they had their incorrect date there listed. So that's just moving it to the correct date of the 4th Tuesday of the month of August. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry seven to zero. Public comments on anything you wish to address the board on this evening? Name an address at the microphone.
Sharon Janasik, 4314 Anistree. I have to say, after the week we've had here in Bethel Park, I've never been prouder to be a resident of such a fine community. I do want to point out, it was an excellent use of social media and the organization-- I do want to point out, it was an excellent use of social media and the organization of the community members, particularly the moms and the parents, who stepped up to help all the residents after the catastrophic flooding that we had. It was inspiring and touching, and I think a lot of us met a lot of people and made a lot of friends. And I know that you all, as members of the community, have had impacts of yourself, and you have participated as well. But I must say that I was very sad to not receive anything from the school district. It may surprise you, but for a lot of people in our community, school is part of our family. And we all have families, whether they're blood families, neighborhood families, scout families, church families. But for our children, and our parents, and a lot of our teachers, and a lot of our staff, our district is part of that family. And I really think you missed an opportunity, even if you didn't know what to say, or where to refer people, or know what to offer. It would have meant a lot, I think, to our families to get an email with your thoughts and your prayers, and expressing your sadness at what everyone was going through. There's some kids whose homes they can't live in, who came running out of basements terrified, who were in vehicles that were floating. You had a recent graduate who actually was sucked into a culvert, and thank God, came out the other side and lived to tell that story. I think there's a lot of impact on a lot of people in our school district family. And I just wish we had heard from you.
Any other comments? Then I have any board members that would like to make any comments?
I do. I also express, a lot of our staff, as individuals, did step up collecting donations, organizing drives, getting things together. I want to commend those of our staff who did step up during this catastrophe in the community. I want to express my personal sympathies to the families, the neighbors, the friends who have been affected with this. And I, I am also deeply troubled that we, as a district, didn't do something, say something, take some role of leadership, whether it was our responsibility or not. It was our moral responsibility, I feel, to recognize, as a neighborhood, as a community, there was a catastrophe, and we do have a role. So I want to express, again, my sympathy, my empathy with the families, the fact that I've dealt with this, with flooding, it's a long-term thing, and we still have an opportunity to lead, an opportunity to help in some way or another. It's not, this happened last week and it's over. People are going to be recovering for months, if not years, from some of the tragedies, some of the damage that was inflicted upon their homes, their vehicles, whatever. And with that said, I also want to let everyone know that, on a different topic, a lighter topic, that a couple of my fellow board members and I have decided to hold a town hall event prospectively on Thursday, July 19, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., Bethel Park Community Center. The purpose of this town hall will be to listen to the ideas, concerns, comments, and vision of our neighbors, so that we, as your elected representatives, will continue to make decisions to lead our district in the positive direction that we have come to expect and that our children deserve. More information will be forthcoming. I hope to see you there. I hope that we can take more of the leadership role in the recovery of our families and our neighborhood, and other inepties have greatness on them. July 19. There will be more information solidifying relevant, prospectively, July 19.
Any other board members wish to make any comments?
Mrs. Cook, would you ask our solicitor, Mrs. Andrews, to also address the legal, or give her legal opinion about the town hall is going to be occurring?
Well, yes, like, I mean, what I have told, what I have said is that certainly, you know, anybody can hold any meeting that they want to. It is not a school board meeting. It is not a school-sponsored meeting. It is not a school board-sponsored meeting. It is individuals having an individual meeting that is not related to the school board, as it is not called as a special meeting under your policy or under the school code, just individuals that are having their own meeting.
And in your opinion, if five or more members would be come up, that we would be in violation of the Sunshine Act?
I think there is potential for that, yes.
Thank you.
Can you clarify potential, or would we be in violation?
Well, as I've already told you, that you are allowed to be in a room together. Certainly, I can't ever, there's no law that says that five board members aren't allowed to be in a room together. The issue with the Sunshine Act is that all school district deliberation and action, not just the vote, but deliberation on those school actions, are to be held in public by the school board at a properly advertised school board meeting that is either your regular board meeting or a special board meeting that's called by the president. So the Sunshine Act does require that deliberation, not just the vote, but also the deliberation on those issues is to occur in that manner.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I do. I would like to comment on Mr. James Sacks' comment. It sounded like, if I understood it correctly, that there was an implication that the board, people, meaning me being part of it, the district. Well, it came across to me, I mean, maybe, we know, we can't have to go back up in it, but it sounded like you were trying to say that us up here as a board, district, I don't know, did not care about the people and did not do anything about it.
That's what I said.
I know, but it sounded like, that's how my interpretation, it just sounded like we were, you know, we were upset that there was nothing being done by the district to help these people because they're all part of us, so it's a community and all that. And I mean, that's a further thing from the truth. And we have emails right now that have been going on. I was in the hospital, I just got done with an operation on Wednesday, the day the flight took place. And immediately, we were talking to people that were affected. There's 275 homes that were affected. So I know, me personally, I cannot speak on behalf of the board as we are never to do. But, but I don't know, yeah, so I don't know how the district was supposed to do.
Mrs. Janasik, let him have the opportunity to give his perspective of what was said.
So the point being is that we, this happened not even a whole week ago, and things are already happening, so I don't know how long it needs to take place. And we know that there's people forming together and helping, which is great, but a lot more has to be done. I know that, and I'm sure as a district, we know that, too. So what I was going to say without knowing what your speech was going to be, was I was going to bring up the fact that there is a lot of sites out there right now. Citizens Bank is collecting money, if you want to go and give donations there, instead of doing it through the, whatever the online thing is, a lot of people like myself does not like online type of charge cards, you know, because I don't trust them. And then the municipal building, 831-6800, you can call there, and you can also find out more information. So if everybody's listening here, make sure you do that. So we do have a catastrophe here, it was a state of emergency. And as a board member of the district, I know that we all want to try to see what we can do to help out, you know. So this is not an election year, so this is just purely a from-the-heart type of comment, you know, that's all it is. So, yeah, we were very sad. But to try to end on a positive note, the great news about Bethel Park, that's how we always like to leave things on a positive note. Bethel Park, I think, is doing great. And we've got now, appears to be on paper, a very good, super assistant, super, I have a principal.
Associate principal.
Assistant superintendent. So anyhow, so congratulations, Bethel Park, and, you know, our prayers are for all the families out there right now for the 275.
And I have to concur with Ron. I also worked on the front lines when Carnegie got hit. And you always have to have someone that's in charge, and it's usually the municipality. And it was their issue to deal, and they have their EMS. They tell us what to do. We do not jump in. But we did, Dr. Pascarelli did have communication with them. He did make offer, but you follow the leader. You don't get in their way. I mean, that's just the way they operate. But we did offer, and, you know, and they said they didn't need any help. I think they did a wonderful job. And yes, we had the catastrophe, and we had a lot of people up here that had to help their neighbors. So I'm kind of feeling like you're chastising us for having not done more. But they are in charge, because they have to get funding and report us as a state of emergency. There's only one boss, and that's just like if there's a fire. When the fire department shows up, the police step back. But we did offer, and I think that should be noted. We jumped in and we offered, there's nothing else we could do. They said they had enough help.
Okay. I need a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.